I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, before we get started tonight, we're going to have a moment of silence for our British friends with the death of Queen Elizabeth II. Thank you. Okay. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Moving into our public hearing tonight, this is Code Bill 2-22. This is a public hearing on Lavelle Sanitary District Utility Improvement Water Main Bond. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, commissioners. As you know, our last meeting on August 25th, we introduced Code Home Rule Bill 2-22. It would be for Lavelle Sanitary and their work with the Locust Grove project, specifically the forced main. So we introduced this bill last meeting. Today would be our hearing. If we would accept any public comment, there may be. If there's none, you guys, this is a legislative day, so you'd have a chance to go ahead and act on it today if you so choose.
All righty. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the bond issuance? Commissioners, anything?
No, sir. It's a good project.
Is there a motion to take action this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Under our action agenda, item two is Resolution 22-22, Braddock and Jennings Run Sewage Conveyance Improvement Bond Resolutions. Mr. Bennett.
So commissioners, very much the same project here. Braddock, Jennings Run Sewage Conveyance is also the Locust Grove project. This is the county's portion of that project. We've already done a bond bill on this. We've done that previously. So it's in place. Today's action would be to adopt this resolution so that we could close on two separate loans through MDE in the total amount of $2.9 million that would go towards this project. So most of the work is already complete, at least for these two loans. One of the loans, which is $727,000, is actually a forgivable loan. As you know, MDE is very, very good with us as far as what we get from them. That loan is completely forgivable. The other $2.1 million is at a 30-year term, at 0.8% interest, and it'll be repaid by all the users of that system. So we're recommending your approval for that tonight.
Okay. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Item three is for the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad Property Tax Credit. Mr. Bennett.
So back in our August 4th meeting, we actually did property tax credits for many of our entities that are allowed property tax credit under state law. Those entities had submitted letters to us and you guys approved them. The Western Maryland Scenic Railroad at that time didn't have theirs into us. They've since reached out and asked for this credit, not only for the current year, fiscal year '23, but actually going back a year to fiscal year '22, as they hadn't submitted last year or so. Tonight, for your approval, is simply to approve both of those years' credits. That's allowed by state law.
Sir, have they ever got this in the past? Was this just something that was due to COVID, this or that, that they didn't get their letters in, or since for two years? I mean, have they?
In the past, we've always had. Yes. In the past, it's always been there. Yes.
Good.
Commissioners, I should, I'm sorry. I should note for the record that Mr. Beeman prepared this material because I have a conflict with the railroad, and therefore he was solely responsible for preparing these documents.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Item number four is Appalachian Regional Commission, A R C, conference sponsorship, an amount of $7,000. Gentlemen, as you know, we are going to be the host county of the Appalachian Regionals Conference this year. It's going to be October 17th through 19th here at Rocky Gap. We're very, very pleased to be doing this and putting the county on display. Governors throughout the country will be coming. I think Governor Justice from West Virginia is coming, Glenn Youngkin from Virginia, of course Governor Hogan is the host. So Tri-County Council is kind of taking the lead on that. I'm on Tri-County Council for Allegheny County, and so we've been working together to put on this great event and showcase our region. So it's not just all going to be at Rocky Gap. There are going to be downtown Cumberland and Frostburg for a few events. So a couple hundred people. It's not just the governors. It's A R C staff and everyone from basically all the way up in New York down to Georgia and Alabama will be coming to this conference. So we're happy to do it. They've asked us for $7,000 to be a sponsor, and I'll make the motion we do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, is there a possibility that that would be an occurring recurring event annually, or is that undetermined?
They actually move it around every year, and there's 13 states in A R C. I don't know how they pick who gets to host it, but I think Maryland hosted it like in 1991. So we missed the last, our last turn, and I don't know if that's because we only have three counties in it or what, but yeah, it's been a long time. They had a picture of William Donald Schaefer and Mario Cuomo. We're at the one in 1991, so I think Mr. Nedbin might remember that one. All right. Okay. Item number five is Allegheny County's 2022 Land Preservation Parks Recreation Plan Improvement. This is required for some open space funding, as well as some other things. Mr. Dan Dwyer.
Good evening. Mr. Shane, you pretty much said, I'm just going to jump on that and reiterate. This is a document that we're required to have through Maryland D N R every five years that needs an update, the Land Preservation Parks Recreation Plan, L P P R P, aimed to make sure that the public understands what our goals and strategies are for investing to improve our parks and our recreation facilities and our open spaces for public benefit. We've followed a process here lately to make the plan available to the public and to municipalities for review and permit. It's been reviewed by D N R, and we, just last week, had a review presented and approved by the Allegheny County Planning and Zoning Commission. Next step here now is to present it and request your approval for adoption and then send it to the D N R. The reason this plan is popular and important for us is that it then enables us to receive open space funding, which is very popular here in Allegheny County, if you know. So at this point, we're requesting your approval and adoption, the 2022 update to the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan through Allegheny County.
Gentlemen, any discussion? Very good. Thanks for your work on that, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Item six is Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. We got a grant award. Ms. Tanya Gummer is here.
I'm here on behalf of the sheriff. As you stated, we have received a grant award, and this is all due to H. Bill, House Bill 670, the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, which was the largest police reform that has been done in the history of law enforcement. What this did, it not only repealed the law enforcement officer's bill of rights, but it also prohibits police officers from preventing citizens from recording them as long as they are acting lawfully and safely. It established a Maryland Loan Assistance Repayment Program for police officers and a scholarship program. It requires intensive police training. It requires the Standards Commission to take action in response to violations within force, and requires a police accountability board, which you know that Allegheny County has established. Fortunately, there was this grant opportunity that came into play, which is the Maryland Police Accountability Community and Transparency Grant. It's called a PACT grant, and we were fortunate. It was a $500,000 grant. We had the opportunity to receive $492,000 in this grant opportunity, actually $492,594. So I was real close to that $500,000. What we will do through our grant program is we will work to improve relations between citizens and law enforcement while holding our law enforcement officers accountable for their actions in an effort to foster transparency within the community for all stakeholders in Allegheny County. Our program will allow for the implementation of the majority of House Bill 670 areas of accountability training and also includes public outreach. Our program funds will provide for personnel, supplies, contracted services, and equipment. There are four key areas of the PACT grant: accountability, public outreach, law enforcement training, and equipment. All of our areas will be covered by this grant funding, with the exception of the three areas that are in red. So we are going to be able to accomplish the bulk of what is in this House bill with this grant funding. So that's going to, you know, alleviate the county from having to come up with those funds in such a short amount of time. We're going to focus on implementing a plan for body more cameras, so then we'll be able to apply for funding next year to do that implementation phase. The key things for our grant are pretty exciting. As you can see, under the law enforcement training, there's a lot of training requirements as far as use force, de-escalation training, peer bias intervention, and implicit bias training. So with that, we found some really awesome virtual reality technology that's out there. The top of the line is a 300-degree interactive virtual experience that will actually put our law enforcement officers and members of the community in these situations. So we hope to use this. You can also see for public outreach, we're going to do a citizens' police academy. So for the community to better understand what our law enforcement officers go through on a daily basis, we want to give the community members engaged in these training environments so they can see that split-second decisions have to be made in the performance of their duties. And it's easy to judge in today's society with all the videos that surface, but when you're actually embedded in that scenario, things aren't always so clear. So we hope to extend that, so then the community will have a better understanding. Also, for all of the different requirements that are associated with the police accountability board, as far as having an intervention system, a misconduct database, those things are also going to be included in this grant funding, so that we can purchase that software and all of those necessary requirements, as well as having funding to pay for a victims' rights advocate who would be the liaison between any complaints that are filed and the police accountability board. The big thing that we found is the citizens' police academy is probably going to be our best tool to make sure that we build bridges in the community, we get community members engaged, and we cultivate those relationships across the community, from all members of the community, from one end of the county to the other. So we're hoping to have a nine-week program ready for the spring, and then we are probably looking at probably 25 to 30 people that'll be in our first cohort to go through this. It'll be taught by different members of the law enforcement community, state attorney's office, the corrections community, so then that way we have the whole criminal justice system engaged. Are there any questions, gentlemen? It's a lot of information, I know.
Tanya, thank you for your work in getting this grant. You know, I'm happy the state is going to waste money on these things and not us. You know, 300 murders in Baltimore, and this is what the state's wasting money on. You think crime's out of control because we don't hold police officers accountable? Give me a break.
Yeah.
Give me a break. Every county in the state of Maryland has to put together a, I don't know what they're calling it, but police accountability board. It should be called unaccountability, because you're going to get people in there who's getting paid. The only thing to do is to discipline police officers. So if you think that's going to improve policing in the state of Maryland, you're wrong. You're totally wrong. This is all part of the worst bill that's been passed against law enforcement in the state of Maryland, but I'm glad the state's paying for it. So we'll be happy to take their money and not use any local taxpayers for it. We should put a note that they should use this in Baltimore City to hire some more police and get some of their murders under control, because that's really a horrible thing that's going on in our state, and people continue to ignore it, and they'd rather play politics with these things like this.
Oh, keep going. I agree. I like it. I don't think you're going to have anyone here to sit here and disagree with you, sir. I'll make a motion that we accept a grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
Very good, sir.
All right. Our consent agenda tonight is a short one. Mr. Bennett.
Commissioner, six items tonight on the consent agenda. Item seven is fiscal year '23 Maryland Center for School Safety and Maryland Department of Education grant in the amount of $84,564 to provide school resource officers through the sheriff's office for public schools. Item eight, Washington Street Library Sidewalk and Retaining Wall Restoration Award to First Fruits Excavating out originally West Virginia, in the amount of $168,825. Item nine is two vehicles to be leased through Public Works, a Ford F-150 and a Jeep Compass. This is to be through Enterprise Fleet Management. As you remember, we did a larger agreement with Enterprise a few weeks ago. So these are the first two vehicles in the door. Item 10, declaration of surplus vehicles, to declare surplus, a 2005 Chevy Equinox, and we'll dispose of that in accordance with county policy. Item 11, also declaration of surplus trailers, a 2004 trailer and a 2007 trailer that were used by our recycling operation. And last but not least, item 12, Garden City Mobile Home Park Acquisition Project. So this is to award a project demolition to Easy Out of Cumberland, Maryland, in the amount of $25,000, and that will be to demolish 25 pad sites, 12 single wide mobile trailers, and cleanup of the entire site, including disconnecting and capping any of the tapster there.
Okay. Hey, item eight, at or Jason or Dan, are we putting bricks back by the library?
Maybe they're doing as much restoration as they can to try to put backups there and pour some concrete caps on the wall and try to restore that to that MHD, so it's got to be closer to the original town.
That's what I was figuring. Because sometimes when the bricks come up, they don't go back down. Stay on it.
Imagine the best we can for sure.
Okay. Motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two people signed up to speak tonight. Mr. Will Hager for the Garden City Trailer Park. Hagan, Hager, please.
Hey, gentlemen. Thank you for your time and your ear. I'm Will Hager. I live at Green Lake Ridge in Alamo, Maryland, and I'm representing Green Ridge Environmental. We've been involved with the Garden City Mobile Home Park for about a year and a half now. We were awarded the initial contract to do the evaluation of the mobile homes and see if they were structurally sound to move, which ones were and were not movable. Worked on pricing for removing the ones that were not movable, and a second, and we actually, we won that award, and that work was conducted, and we want a second part of it to replace homes that couldn't be moved with new structures that were comparable in size to the homes that the residents were in. That project was awarded through council, but it never was started. So my only point in bringing these two up is that I'm familiar with the Garden City project. We bid the demo work as well. Put quite a bit of effort into creating a very thorough proposal, as others did. We were on the, we weren't the high bid, but we were the next to highest, but nonetheless, very inclusive bid. And the question I had tonight, when I saw the agenda item on the meeting agenda, was that there's also an award being considered here for change orders at the same time, and that is a question of what is that change order and why was that not presented during the bid process so that all the people bidding on the project could have the opportunity to, you know, consider that, those items in the bid price?
Dave?
Yeah, that's actually just pretty standard. It's the idea that I don't, not me, but that we don't have to go back to the commissioners and ask them. It's actually not any particular change order right now. It's just the idea that if a change order is needed down the road, we don't have to run it through a public meeting again.
Okay. So what's valuable, how do you?
It can vary. It really can. That's the idea, though, is like, for example, with this project already, we have found out from MDE that we're going to be required to put a silt screen fencing in there. That's an additional cost that we weren't aware of, and we didn't put in the invitation for bids. So now we're going to be expecting, no matter who had won the bid, we were now going to be expecting them to put a silt screen fencing in, and that'll be an additional cost, and they'll rightly, the contractor will rightly come back to us and say, hey, you need to have a change order, and we need to charge for that. And this would cover that. But we do this to anticipate any change order that might come down the road.
Okay. So I know you all vote on a lot of things, and you don't probably have the time to pay a lot of attention to a lot of these different projects, but in this case, there were seven people that bid this project, and five of them came in $75,000 approximately in above. The high bid from J Q Mobile Homes was $127,500. Green Ridge's bid was $109,200, and they were stepped down from there. The winner of the contract came in at $25,000. So to me, I don't quite understand how that's possible. I didn't, you know, just doing the math on this, you don't have to be an engineer to understand what you get for $25,000 these days. There's 25 pad sites. If you're $1,000 a piece on the pad site, there's $25,000 right there. Then you've got 12 mobile homes with contents that you don't know what's in them. You've got all the concrete that's around the facility, you've got the decking, and you've got 15 sheds. And I didn't hear when you ran through the items, if the 400 tons of asphalt that's supposed to be removed is also still in the plant. 400 tons of asphalt, it's a lot of asphalt, and I can't imagine how you can do that worth $25,000. So my only question is, is there some other procurement process in place with the county that's allowing this type of procurement to go through, and it's not fair to everybody that bids appropriately? So that's, I wanted to get the explanation of the change order and make you aware of the range in the pricing that you're not aware of.
Well, I'll say, we bid a lot of projects here. Not many are kind of like this project. A lot of them are more Public Works related, whether they be bridge or road projects. But anytime there is going to be any material variance in that project and we have a change order or something like that, would go back through a meeting. So we're not going to turn this $25,000 project into a $100,000 project.
No, not at all. That's not the case. Well, I'm just saying, I mean, when I see that a change order is being considered for the approval tonight, it makes me wonder if there's information that the rest of us weren't made aware of, that there's a missing issue out there that requires a change order needed.
No, I, no, it's just me, I say me, it's just us anticipating that there might be a change order down the road. Believe me, we do it with grant funding, too. We'll put in that amendments can be approved ahead of time, because there are amendments sometimes that happen. And there's, other than the silt screen, which I just found out about a few days ago, I foresee no change orders at the moment.
Okay. So does $25,000 sound reasonable to you? 11 years of doing contracted work with the state of Maryland, if you got a bid like that and throw it out, it's nonresponsible. And for that matter, a $30,000 one, that's just a model. It doesn't show that the contractor would thought about this project, and you're going to take that one.
But you can see that there were actually two bids in that range. Miller Trucking came in with a $30,000 bid, and as the commissioners know, Miller Trucking does a lot of demolition for us. They tend to be the low bid on a lot of projects, and they felt, their response to the bid was, they were surprised at the 25, but they didn't think it was out of line. They just thought it was, you know, they bid 30. So I had two bids, basically in the 25, 30 range, and as you said, then there was a, you know, a few more bids closer to the 75, and then, there was a wide range of bids, 100, 109, 127.
So J Q Mobile Homes probably has the most experience with mobile homes, I think, with the high bid.
Yeah.
So when I see a $25,000 bid, that just doesn't seem right to me.
I know that F U C.
It doesn't smell right to me, to be honest with you.
Well, but I'm looking at.
I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything, but I'm just saying.
I can tell you that EZ Out.
The process in the county, I hope it is not handled this way by any other department.
I can tell you that EZ Out, I have seen the invoices come across my desk. EZ Out has won quite a few bids with the city of Cumberland, so they're an experienced contractor in demolition. Miller Trucking was an experienced contractor, and both of them bid about the same price, you know, within 5,000. I know.
I don't know.
I know.
Relationship between those two companies.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say. It's, it seems almost impossible to me to do without being the charity work, and I don't think you're asking for charity work here. Everybody's trying to make some profit or something. The only other point I'd like to add is the whole procurement process, there's information that wasn't available to everybody. So the tires, for example, because I was involved with the first part of the project, there's a trailer there that's full, chalk full tires. So that was an additional cost, and Dave said the county would.
Well, we'll pay for that cost.
Well, that's not what you told me, and you didn't tell Steve. So we put in work that we had to dispose of all those tires.
What would you say the cost of disposing those tires would have been to you?
Well, it's at least $2,000 for the tires, plus the labor to pull it out of the trailer and delivery and retention.
Okay. But you can see the bids weren't.
Well, I'm just saying, the point I'm trying to make is there's information that wasn't distributed to everybody, and that's not how this is supposed to work. And I have actually 15 points in my proposal of things that we thought were information missing, so.
I mean, these bids were sealed bids. I accepted them. We were spot.
So Appendix B is a list of 15 items that were information that was questionable, but were returned, and Dave wasn't available, he was in vacation.
I was available. You, anybody that called me, got me. If you were to call someone at your office, you'd have information that you're talking through.
Hey, sir, if you'd like offline, if you'd like to meet with our county attorney's office, they'd be happy to meet with you and talk through this.
I'd be happy to speak with them as well, but I'm just, I just want to make you all aware of the process from our perspective, that companies came here from out of town. I was up here for a week. I had my own money, so sure. There's a gentleman in Payers Towns here. Coming up here, spending money to put time and effort into these bids, and I just want to make you aware that, you know, we're actually a WBE, that, you know, there's no incentive there for you all to use a WBE, but, you know, we're encouraged to participate, but, you know, this, the way it looks, it's tough to participate when you see how the outcome is. People were leaving here yesterday, or Tuesday, shaking their heads. So, you know, I don't know what, just wanted to make you aware. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All righty. Dan Williams for recycling cans, bins?
Me and Liam from Mount Savage, 12916 St. George's Lane. A couple of folks asked me if I'm down this evening and say something. We had recycling bins there, Savage, and they took it out. So a couple of guys said, people, why, where to go, whatever. I spoke to the young lady upstairs, she's in charge of that now, and they needed one in Flintstone, and they in Plinston, and they needed one in Old Town. If you check the one at Westmore Middle Valley High School, it's gone. It went to Old Town. And one, Mount Savage, went to Plinston. And folks are just asking, can we get one back or what's up? Good chance to check into it?
We'll look into it. Yeah, we'll look into it.
All right. Thanks. Everybody's asking, so going to get a clean drink of water due to the top of the stream.
All righty. Mr. Bennett, anything?
Nothing further for me.
No, sir.
It is us? You don't want to talk about some bid process, the lease?
No, I having, I understand Mr. Hager's concern. I have, at times, advised my governmental clients that sometimes when you accept the lowest bid, you get what you pay for. But in this case, the bidder, I haven't seen the contract personally that would have gone through the office, the bidder has contracted to do this for that price, and I'm sure Mr. Nedved's not going to authorize a $10,000 change order to increase that bid. So if they can't do it, then Mr. Beaman and I will take them to court.
Yep. Very good. Okay. Commissioner Caprilli?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Brody?
Dan, what's going on with the consent decree? I'll put you on the spot tonight. We working through this?
I think the meeting that happened last week, I wasn't a part of it, but what I heard, it was a very well-attended meeting from a lot of different folks who are trying to come up with a pass word, and I don't know what the next immediate step is, other than the project that's currently going on in Oak Grove is being reviewed by some folks, and we're trying to work with them to figure out what to do next. But it's brought a lot of people to the table that haven't been at the table lately, and we're trying to play nice, but still make sure that we can continue to get things done.
Okay. Because you kind of know where I'm going with this, then?
I do.
And I just found out about it today. Thank God I don't have my guns loaded for tonight because I don't like threats, especially from MDEs, especially when you got half of them funding this and the other half saying that they'll pull the funding and shut the project down because if that's what they want to do, then do it. And I will go very extremely public on this. I don't like threats, especially from the government. And we kind of was told here tonight, it was almost someone was insinuating we was doing something illegal with the trailers. Speaking from someone, it was an estimator for years. I've took a couple of them low jobs, and there's always an edge and there's always an angle of why. I'm sure whoever got the job is planning on holding the trailers in for metal to subsidize the price and scrap them, blah, blah, blah. That's separate. But MDEs playing a very serious game here right now with everyone, and it'll impact every citizen in Allegheny County. And I don't like the statements, and if I find out that there was a letter sent around with these threats in it, or an email, I will make them public. So, thank you.
And Commissioner, I think they found a path forward on this one to make it all work and go away, if you would.
Well, you know, that's MDE's MO, and what they're doing is they're ramping up, and I'll be perfectly honest, they're looking at Governor Hogan's exit, or get someone in there now that the extreme leftists will be able to stomp us. So now they're going to go back into their terror tactics that we've dealt with in the past and the threats, and I'll say, you know what? If what we're going to do, then by God, we'll just, we'll just bring her all public from now on. If they want to have any meetings, we'll have them publicly, and they can, they can do all the threats they want. So, thank you.
Well said. Okay. The only other things we have, our health officer has been posted, so Allegheny County is hiring for a health officer. It's on our website. I believe it closes the 23rd of September.
I think that's correct, yes.
So we'll be working to get that filled over the next couple of months. You know, that's a very important job for our community, running the health department. The other thing, we have, Laveil Library is opening on September 23rd. We're excited for that. Great project. We were very in the weeds and involved in that, and 90% of the money's coming from the state. So, you know, it's a huge bang for our buck. I think we have about $400,000 in it. It's a $4 million project, total overhaul of that library that needed it, and it's going to be a great facility for years to come. So I encourage everyone to come out to the festivities, and it's, it'll be a great, great night for Laveil in Allegheny County. So, okay. With that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, September 22nd, 5 o'clock. We'll see you then.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. None for us, do we?